Good afternoon. Glad to welcome everyone to this Tuesday August 18th City Council Council meeting. Thanks for coming out today. We'll start all of our meetings with a moment of silence, invocations, and the place of allegiance. Today we will be led by Councilman Anthony Gibson. All that are able, please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your divine protection. Thank you for how you kept us and kept our families. We ask your blessings upon our nation, our state, and our city. Continue, God, to bless our public service workers and our constituents that live in Sumter, city, and county. Father, we ask your blessings on tonight. Give us your wisdom and your guidance and direction that we may do what's pleasing in your sight to better serve your people. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
The Constitution is the law of the United States of America, and it is a great product for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Do we have the minutes from our August 5th regular meeting? Any changes to be made or approved as written? Hasty moves, Gibson seconds, so we approve the minutes. August 5th meeting is written. No other discussion. Here none, all papers say aye. Any opposed? Record show, minutes are approved as written. A little point of note before we get into our old business, that we do have a public hearing, which is different than our public comment section. That'll be at six o'clock. So we're gonna have to stop wherever we are at then to go to the path, to go to our public hearing, which is a rezoning, and then we'll pick back up on our agenda wherever we leave off. Moving to know, business boards and commissions. I don't have anything to add to this, other than we always keep an eye, we've got a line of staffs given us to keep an eye on that, always look for candidates who might want to cross the community to sign up, that are willing to serve, and if spots come open, we always use volunteer as one of the to serve on board commission. You want to add again to that? Here none. Move item three, RZ twenty-five oh seven, fourteen forty-five, Cameron Howland, is written?
There have been no changes to this request since first reading, we continue to recommend.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any questions for Mr. Rupert? Any questions? Here none, is there a motion to consider file reading? I made the motion for approval. Shallow moves, Kennedy seconds. Do we approve file reading? Is any further discussion?
When did we get to speak about that? I'm sorry. We thought we could say something about that, many of us.
That was, we had a public hearing on this, I think, two meetings ago, so no more public comment on this matter today. Travel motion and a second, any further discussion?
I would like to add, as a point of discussion, I reached out to the developer based on the comments of the initial public hearing, and the concerns that we heard were, to retain as much of the vegetation, the tree cover, mature trees specifically, were kind of my takeaway. And he has assured me that within their ability, they will leave as many of the mature trees as possible. He says certainly there will be change, there will be some that have to be removed in order to accommodate what they plan to build, but he named a few, Pecan was one that I remember, it's a pretty pleasant tree to have around. But again, he said while he will not be able to retain all of them, they will leave everything that is practical, and they are sensitive to change that it will make to the area.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Is there, can we request anything, ask, because the finishes of those homes, that they're just approving without giving any details?
Unfortunately, this is on the board, we had a public hearing prior to...
We went to the wrong thing in time, thirteen of us showed up at the last meeting at the wrong thing in time and desperately tried to...
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I apologize, but this meeting does not have a public hearing on this matter, that was had back then. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye. Any opposed? Record show, carries your hands. Item number four, amendment to city code. Mr. Crowe is up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the administration has proposed several amendments to this ordinance prior to second reading. The version of the ordinance in your agenda packet contains those proposed amendments, and I'll just briefly summarize those. In section one, the proposed amendment is to add at the end, reference to the words or nine ninety-eight. Nine ninety-eight is a federal IRS form that requires charitable organizations to report taxable income, so we thought that would be helpful to business licenses as well. The second set of amendments is to add the words "but is not limited to" in section four and section seven, which gives examples of a nuisance, for example, requiring enhanced law enforcement presence at a business. And the final group of amendments are in section six and nine of the ordinance, in which the words "to the detriment of the public" are deleted at the end of the sentence. The idea there was to remove an additional requirement approved on the part of the city in denying or revoking business license on this particular ground. As you will recall, this ordinance provides additional tools to the business license official in determining whether licenses should be denied or revoked, and also hopefully provides some clarity in discussing what constitutes a nuisance and what grounds should be appropriate for, what additional grounds should be appropriate for denial or revocation. So we would ask that the council first move to amend the ordinance to conform to the version that's contained in your agenda packet, and then if that motion passes, that the council then move to adopt the ordinance as amended on second reading. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions for Mr. Rupert?
So this is only for nonprofits?
No, ma'am. Section one deals with charitable organizations. The other sections, two and three, allow the license official to issue conditional or provisional business licenses, primarily to address businesses that serve alcohol, beer, or wine, to give us an additional oversight and review mechanism for those businesses. And then section four introduces this concept that I discussed of providing an example of what is a nuisance for any business, if it requires enhanced law enforcement presence, for example. And then the other sections deal, present the same provisions for denial and revocation. I hope I answered your question, but no, the first section does only address charitables. The rest of it applies primarily to businesses for profit.
Any, anything else? Come forward, Ken. Any question? Anyone else out there? Any questions for Mr. Rupert?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, just so everybody knows, the reason why, we really felt this was, one additional reason, we thought it was really important that a nonprofit doesn't need a business license, so we wanted to clarify, make sure they're a legit nonprofit, because they won't need a business license for those who have one, these are tools to make sure things are clear.
Understood. Last call, any questions? Here none, then is there a motion to amend ordinance number twenty-eight-eight, as presented?
Second.
And if you move, Shaw seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye. Any opposed? And move to amend, has to you now, is there a motion to adopt with file reading of the amended motion? I move for approval of amended ordinance. Davis moves, second. Shaw seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye. Record show, the file reading carries, you have us. Thank you. Moving to new business, we have some procurement resolutions. Who we got? I'll take that.
Good evening. Resolution nine ninety-eight is for a knuckle boot loader. Public services requesting to purchase a new knuckle boot loader for our sanitation department. We use this piece of equipment to pick up yard debris. We currently have seven in our fleet. We are purchasing a new one, but it will replace an existing one that is maybe coming out of service. We're requesting to purchase this equipment from Amic Equipment for two hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. This quote represents the North Carolina Sheriff's Association pricing, and the equipment purchased is being funded through this year's fiscal budget. We chose this model because it's standard within our fleet and it worked really well for us. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? This ever states.
When do you all pick up the yard debris? Is there a particular day?
There's days for different sections of the city, and we can publish a list if it's not already readily available for you.
Because I see in my area, sometimes people put yard debris on the power lines, and I don't think you all are able on the trees that are hanging in the hole. And you're unable to pick that stuff up.
Correct. There's certain requirements where the yard debris has to be placed in order to be picked up properly.
In the past, I think we had someone explain that to the public. Do we have such a...
We do, and we can, I can make sure that next council meeting we have it present here and we can give it to everyone.
That'd be great, so we can pass it out to my constituents, so they'll know, because you cannot put your yard debris, because it will not be picked up, not because the city don't like you, but you might have done a bad play.
There's been different places, and sometimes it's inconvenient for other people, you might mess up grass, so we're trying to make it so that it works for everyone, but I can understand it can be a problem.
Yeah, but I get this call, this, I was in the mayor's area, they would pick this up, and that's not the case, it's where you put the yard debris.
No, they pick the mayors up when I cut the appropriate length that it's supposed to be, I follow the rules, sir. That's one of the rules too, it can't be so big, so long.
You gotta buy by the rules too.
That's everybody knows, that's right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Is there any way that we can maybe use the water bill? I know I got a nice little plant out, or something that was called on, into a water bill, that if your section, that section that is getting ready to get picked up with yard debris, if just in their mail out or their water bill, they would say, get your stuff ready, we're picking it up, here's the rules, get ready, I'll be honest with you, I don't know the rules, but I know they want to pick up our car for work.
We can look into that and see what the options are. I know, you know, your water bill goes at a specific time, and so you might be getting that right after your yard debris is just picked up. So we can look at different avenues in order to get the information out of the board.
Well, we know, like, it's not free to pick up, we just spent in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a pretty expensive piece of equipment to do this job. Just want to point out that it costs money, that we want to try to expand on that, we've got to do something about increases in taxes if we're gonna do that, for the cost.
And I also noticed in the picture, that this was one that had like a truck that would back up to it. I've seen the ones on the road that we've got now, they call it a trailer, and it's dumped, and is this gonna be the same thing, or we're gonna have another piece of it?
It's the same model that we use.
All of that is the same as the parking area.
The actual trailer attaches to the truck, so it is a separate piece, but just we sell the other one, we keep trailers, so we buy trailers, we buy knuckle boots separate, but just like this truck, kind of one goes out, one comes in, we periodically do that, but we do have a capital expenditure list at your desk, highlight this one.
Any other questions? Here none, is there a motion to consider? Nine ninety-eight is presented.
Okay.
Hasty moves, Kennedy seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye. Any opposed? Record show, nine ninety-eight, carries your hands. You got nine ninety-nine?
I got the rest of them. So nine ninety-nine is the Quail Hollow Water System Connection Project, which consists of extending a twelve-inch water line approximately seventeen hundred and one-heel feet from the city of Sumter's existing water line located on Bethel Church Road to the subdivision entrance on Bob White Drive off of Canesville Road. The water lines located within the subdivision will be replaced with eight-inch piping due to the age of the existing water lines. The city of Sumter has received bids for this project on July twenty-ninth. Public services recommending awarding the project to Barwick Plumbing in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand, ADA dollars, as they were the low bidder. This project is being funded with the state grant funds. Happy to answer any questions about this project.
Any questions? And this one, I guess, Mr. Corwin, I think I recall, this one originated from a delegation, I think, reached out.
It did. This was a private water system that was going to be discontinued, and our delegation reached out to us and said, that can't be, that's gonna be a problem, could we extend our service to them? And then engineering began to work on options that would work, and ultimately working really closely with Rural Infrastructure Authority of the state, we were able to get the grant to do it, so we're very happy to bring this bid to you, and very happy that the numbers work within the limits that we could apply for.
Thank you. Is there a motion to consider resolution nine ninety-nine, it's presented? Move for approval. Davis moves. Hasty seconds, any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye. Any opposed? And carries your hands. Resolution number thousand, main corridor approval, phase two.
The North Main Corridor improvement phase project includes upgrades to the intersection of North Main and West College Street and Brown Street. The scope of this project includes new sidewalks, ADA ramps, high-visibility crosswalks, some asphalt paving, and some landscaping. The city of Sumter received bids for this project on July twenty-third. Public services is recommending awarding this project to Three J Dirt Works in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, as they were the low bidder. This project is being funded with state grant funds. Happy to answer any questions about this project.
Any questions? This is part of the project that's been, we've been waiting a long time for.
Part of the, this one is, we sort of in-house call it Morris College Phase Two, that's right, this is right there in front of the college, so this is another delegation earmarked project. This is the North Main Corridor, but this one, this one is added to the North Main Corridor, so it works plug and play, so that, so again, we're very grateful for our delegation, especially Representative Weeks on this one, who asked for this and helped us get it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Is there a motion to consider resolution number thousand?
Second motion.
It's moves by seconds. Any further discussion? Here none, all the papers say aye. Any opposed? And it carries your hands. Item D, thousand and one.
Public services requesting to purchase a new sewer and stormwater camera for our utility distribution department. We're adding a new camera to our fleet in order to allow both our stormwater crew and our sewer crew to have a camera at the same time. We currently share one, and so the guys have to rotate who has access to the camera. This is the need for a new one, we are increasing the amount of inspections that we're doing and investigations, and these cameras are extremely helpful. The model that we see here is a newer model that we do not currently have. This model is very portable compared to our existing model. This one will be really important for heavily wooded areas for water, sorry, excuse me, sewer and stormwater lines that run driveways, and right now we have our trailer camera, and it's very difficult to get back in these areas. This camera can go right on a truck, and it would be very useful for our guys. We would like to purchase this equipment from Jetback Equipment at the price of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and eleven cents. The equipment is being funded through this year's fiscal budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? What size pipe will that give out? What's the smallest, you know?
Most of our lines, the smallest we have are, we try to use six inches. This one, I don't know the exact size, but I can get back to you.
I was curious, yeah. So you drop it down, and you hook the thousand feet, I see you'll fit right there, that's fascinating. Any other question? Here none, is there a motion to consider thousand and one? Shaw moves, hasty seconds. Any further discussions? Here none, all the papers say aye. Any opposed? And item D, carries your hands. Thanks so much. Council reports. We want to have a panel of chairs, we go to council, we go to the community. We'll start that later. Let's start that, you know?
We really had some great tennis, and it was great seeing some of the people in Sumter, South Carolina, who did not speak English, and we heard some interesting conversations, not exactly sure what was said, but everybody was like they were extremely happy, and I never thought in my lifetime that I would see that type of tennis here in a little town like Sumter, South Carolina. If you get there, you really miss it, that was awesome tennis, and it brought a big value into Sumter, and those that may not have enjoyed...
And yeah, it's known all those, and I had a friend and I was good from New York, and I took him out to the tennis, and he couldn't believe the quality of the tennis that was out there, so it was a great opportunity for Sumter to show that they do here.
Yeah, I think we had somebody out there that was ninety-four, ninety-four, and then we had, sure, I learned that running the ball, yeah, but like, had their little tennis practice, and they were ready to do it, so, it hit a lot different areas, and I'm really proud of the tennis crew out there, and all those, and the city employees, police department, crime department, everybody, all volunteers were gone, and so I think it was a great community event.
I would like to add the same thing, man, on that subject, but with the weather, the rain, all the things, elements that were involved, and the short time, I just commend the city on putting that together and for it running as smooth as it did, making it such a good event. We, we sat beside one man that's here for, I think, three to four days, he was working the other side of Atlanta, and come to watch it, I sat next to somebody from Grebel, there was a group from Hillhead, I mean, just a lot of people then coming up to see it, and really, so like you said, great tennis.
You want, yes, you can add that? No, just echo, man, just to say that spending time out there, really, you appreciate and, like I say, thanks for staff, all levels, I think, there and how we, every department in the city, I think, played a part, and I think our police officers were running the drive port line machine on Saturday, multiple times, so, so it was all hands on deck for sure, and we appreciate the teamwork, everyone, everyone's willingness, it was a major, major task for our staff to pull that off, so it's a short period of time.
Mayor, council, I too attended the qualifying rounds of the tennis tournament on Monday and Tuesday. I got wet, I went back Tuesday. Anyway, it was nice, I don't play tennis, but it's just good to be there, and to see all the guitars that came from across the country to be in Sumter, and there was a lot of revenue for our city, and as the mayor said, the immense staff, all that you did to make this successful. I wanted to raise your attention, council, the last meeting, I mentioned, about resurfacing Bobby Street, and somehow I didn't give it minutes, I said something about overgrown lots on Bobby Street, but that overgrown lot was on the Cook Street area, and it's still having a problem, people dumping trash over the Cook Street area, Queen Street, South Street, and some of them are here tonight, and of course, we're seeing community persons are here as well. I've got some questions about the opening of the park on Open Avenue, formerly being considered, and I was told it should be sometime this month, does it come, do y'all have a date on it yet, so we can let the community know, plan to come for dedication?
End of next month.
The end of September?
For, for a grand opening.
Yeah, so the schedule, because I mean, we're, we're the nineteenth, they're continuing to work, so we'll work with council's schedule, put it out to the public, it should be by the end of next month, we'll have the grand opening.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And we did attend, the mayor and Councilman Gibson, I attended Sumter's, Santi Lynch's monthly meeting on this past Monday. I think that's all I have. Thanks for the privilege to serve, and citizens will be in here this evening.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to mention that last night, we had a city manager to attend one of our neighbor association meetings, the South Association Association meeting on Natty Avenue, he prayed to tell us, he explained a lot to us, in the city about how it goes and runs, and how it even started here in Sumter, so it was a great education, just neighbor association is one of the oldest association in the city of Sumter, it consists of several organizations, from Cross River to Sharon Town, to Turkey Creek, to the Cops Association, so we're trying to pull these neighbor associations together, so we can speak with one another, and we've been doing this for over thirty years. We also talk about the benches in the park, there are under air needs, and there are two under air needs around here, asking for, I work with my group, I'm trying to get some more, because they play basketball, we need some of those for the kids to sit down, and our fan, people are coming to watch, so we need more than two benches in that large area, and we also need some benches around the pickleball court, so the park can sit there and observe how the pickleball is going, and that's really picking up in the park, people are using the walking trail there, and so, in the park, remind everyone that we have our farmers market on Natty Avenue every Friday from four to seven, has a massive game, visit, I seen his wife last Friday. This Friday, we will give away...
Vicious fish.
Vicious fish, we don't give that to them, okay? You don't give fish away, you send it to... We're giving away fifty boxes of food to seniors, and we have to be seniors, and some of y'all too young to be seniors, so if you come out there, we have given away fifty boxes of food to seniors, it's a great time out there, if a pastor, a basket is riding, or had a great time with us, eating up a lot of our fish, but please come out and join us. I would mention one famous analogy, I read this at the gym, this past week, Coach Allen, he was such a great job at the gym, there was a player this week on aging in place, had a professor, PhD, Sean Owens, I think his name was, from one of the partners, said that's his favorite study, dealing with seniors, how to age in your home without having to go to a nursing home. Here's some things you can do in your home that can help you stay in your home, so we all need to hear that. He's been about three places at Sumter, he was scheduled to go to Maria last week, got a car, ran off the road on Lafayette, hit a boom, knocked the lights out at the Maria Church. Little boy knocked the lights out at the Maria Church, that was sad. So they had to reschedule, they gotta reschedule that. But if you heard anything about this program of Sean Owens, from the University of South Carolina, aging in place, you need to try to attend. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. I know we've got a few more comments, but we are at six o'clock, so we'll come back to council reports at that. Let me read the guidelines for public hearings. The guidelines for public hearings, the city council meetings, planning staff, present or request. And council members can then question staff. Advocate can speak on behalf of a request. Council questions the advocate. City residents in favor of a request may address council. Any city residents opposed to the request, then they address council. If you're a city resident or have a financial interest in the property under discussion, you may speak. Each person meeting the requirements, be given the opportunity to do so, however, should become repetition, preserve the right call time. The decision may or may not be made at this meeting, however, the decision will be made at a public meeting. Once the public hearing is clear or closed, there will be no additional comments from the audience, let's call it by council. So we have the RZ twenty-five dash fourteen, four nineteen, South Lafayette Drive.
This request is being brought forward by Ms. James. Ms. James is here to speak on behalf of the request, as the authorization for the property owner. It is a request from a zoning cost of point one five, a general parcel that, uh, from general commercial to a general residential. It is at four nineteen, South Lafayette Drive. And it is at the corner of South Lafayette and Royal Avenue, in the block between Penn and Royal, and between Silver Street and Lafayette. Uh, this is the property in question, it is currently undeveloped, the property just to the north of it, it is a single family dwelling. Uh, and this is the pattern of zoning in the area. You have a small enclave of general residential, but it's along, uh, Royal Avenue and Silver Street to the rear of the property. But everything on the Lafayette front edge of this block is a general commercial. Uh, as is the two blocks to the north and south are fully general commercial. When we look at these zoning requests, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this particular instance, this property is actually in priority commercial corridor. And these corridor designations focus on areas of the community where we would like to attract higher quality commercial development, or makes of high quality residential, higher density development in conjunction with residential thoroughfare, commercial development. Resizing a single parcel, um, along this major corridor to general residential really is in conflict with the district designation. I just, first, orientation, I just pulled some Google Street View, which is down under the block, to kind of give you a feel for what it looks like today. Um, this is from the prop, this is the property in question, and they're traveling, uh, north. This is the top part of the block. You have a hard, a large expanse along Lafayette that is currently undeveloped. There are two single family homes that are on that stretch still, that date from the nineteen thirties and nineteen forties. And they do appear to be occupied. This is the backside of the block. This is where the general residential zoning starts. You have a mix of manufactured homes and single family dwellings. Predominantly, the single family dwellings along this stretch are from the nineteen forties and fifties. There are older factory homes that are still remaining. So this is kind of, just a view down the street. And then this is looking up north Silver, uh, north on Silver Street from the corner. And then this is just Royal Avenue looking back. Just to give you some perspective of how the property is being used, it's probably easier for councilists to see on their screen. I apologize to those in the public, these colors really stink, to try and see from disability standpoint. Guess that was happening when I sit through the key from my monitor instead of about thirty. But buildings that are marked with S F are single family homes, and this is based off of the tax assessment record and visual inspection from Street View. The structures that you see marked as an major manufactured homes. So just kind of composition of what's on the block, and the structure of this block are single family homes. Uh, planning permission did recommend approval of this request. My understanding is that the applicants' impetus for this request is they would like to put their unmanufactured pen on the property and move into their current living, you know, apartment complex in the community, and they're trying to free a place for themselves. I will note that the general commercial zoning district does allow a variety of residential development on them, by conditional use and by right. One of those uses is a modular home, it's not a manufactured home, it's treated like a single family home. But it is in fact, a, a factory constructed structure, um, that you can get some economy still from, out of buying from, from a manufacturer and having a place in the property and a current foundation. That being said, we do have Ms. James here to speak on behalf of the request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that she may have.
Thank you ma'am. Any questions for, for?
Yes, uh, what, what age is the manufacturing hall that's proposed to be?
I would have to defer to Ms. James on that. I'm not certain that a home has been selected yet. I believe when she was looking to use this property, the first step was to even get a zoning entitlement to be able to put a mobile home on the property or manufactured home. Uh, I will tell you that our ordinance doesn't allow anything over twenty years old to be brought into the city. If there is a home that is over twenty years old, but is not a pre-seventy-six mobile home that's already in the city limits, it may be relocated to that property. Um, and if it's over nineteen seventy-six in age, it cannot move from where it's at. So I can guarantee that anything that would go on that property has to be at least as old as I am. Uh, from nineteen seventy-six or newer. But I will tell you that the market of old mobile homes is pretty low right now, they're not readily available. Most of the homes we've been seeing coming, coming in the current, are from the, the twenty-tens in the north. They're just, the, the availability of older homes just doesn't seem to be here. But I would have to defer to Ms. James, I don't know what she's looking at.
You mentioned that car is also designed for a commercial business?
That, that corridor is designated in the comprehensive plan as a priority commercial corridor. Lafayette is one of our main thoroughfares into the community, so it stands to reason that it would be a commercial tract, because of the volume of traffic. Um, it's been designated that way for my entire career. In terms of zoning, it's been general commercial since at least nineteen ninety-nine. And it has had that priority commercial designation for approximately fifteen, fifteen years.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to suggest to the council that, um, we not go on that, just that I'm not going to talk to the arm that's opposing this before we, uh, before we understand.
Well, let's get to that one, let's get some heads, if you don't mind, someone else here through the, um, the, the rest of the public here. We'll, we'll get to that, okay? Any other questions for Miss Ruth?
Yeah, what's the size, what's the depth of the lot? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, it's approximately fifteen, or fifty feet wide. And so. It's about a hundred and thirty-ish, maybe.
So what size, retail or?
I, I will tell you that to make order for that property to develop for any retail purpose, because of the kind of residential behind it, it would require a setback warrant. Uh, because right now, the front setback is forty-five feet because of Lafayette, because it's residentially kinded, it's a fifty-foot rear setback. That leaves a total depth of thirty-five feet, so it would be a pretty small building without variances.
Do you have a parcel map, though, with the multiple parcels, you know, somebody would piece together, I think it's the multiple parcels. I don't know, we have an aerial, I couldn't remember.
There's, there's the zoning map. And then, uh, the aerials always moved in, so this is probably the best perspective.
So the lot behind it, facing Laurel, it's not built on speed.
Uh, that lot is currently undeveloped, yes.
I think if I recall, the next, going north, that's a single family home, then a vacant lot, and then I think it's a multiple vacant lots, and then, uh, there it is, yeah. And then a shopping center, there's, there's true commercial across the street.
There, there is. Um, the, the primary difference between what's going on across the street in this piece is that that block between Lafayette and West Street is literally only one lot deep. It doesn't have any residential development behind it, so it's not quite as impacted the same way by significant setbacks. Because this block depth has half of it sewn residential, it does impact the rear setbacks on those lots right on Lafayette. I think that this, let me, I'm gonna fly back again, because this, I think, that puts it into perspective. This particular block of Lafayette, because it has that strip of general residential, does make redevelopment for commercial on that front edge a little bit more complex, because of the setback discrepancies. The block to the north and the block to the south, the entire blocks are sewn general commercial. So even if there were a house on the property to the rear, it's not impacting the setbacks on the front piece facing Lafayette. So those lots are just more billable without having to go to the VCA for development variances. And I'm not exactly certain why it's been sewn this way, it's been this way my entire career with the city, which is kind of going on twenty years in November, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Miss Ruth? Thank you ma'am. So with that, we'd like to speak on behalf of the request.
Hi, my name is James, and I'd like to hear if you have any questions, gentlemen?
Okay, would council have any questions for that?
Yeah, someone I would like to, I would like to talk, ask any question now, I would like to talk to her, but she's presenting.
Any other, last call, will you have a question for that? Thank you ma'am, for coming. No questions for you, ma'am. Any city residents in favor of a request, like to address council? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor of a request, like to address council? Last call, anyone in favor? Here none, anyone opposed to the request? Like to address council, anyone opposed? Last call, anyone opposed, like to address council? Here none, and the public hearing is closed. And would council like to take any action?
At this time, I would like to propose that we delay taking an action, so I have a chance to talk with Ms. James about, uh, proposing that.
It's gonna be deferred, and we need to set a date, is that correct, Mr. Crowe?
Yes, sir.
So we need to defer to what, the next meeting?
Next meeting date.
Okay. So I have a motion to defer any action to the next meeting date.
Sir.
We have a second motion, and second, any further discussion? Here none, all the way to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like to show deferred to our next meeting, carries unanimous. Thank you so much. That takes us back to our regular agenda. We were on council reports, we've got a few more, the council, I've got, we finished down here. Mr. Davis, I think you have an update for us, when Sue asked me?
I do. Oh. SUEAS, for those that don't know, SUEAS is a, is a body made up of delegates from city council, county council, and members appointed, uh, by the delegation, the state delegation, and the, the two local government bodies. And that oversees the, the progress and the, um, and the scope of work for DOT transportation projects in our area. So it's a good place that we on city council, and then our counterparts on county council, keep a pretty good update on what's happening. Uh, most recently, one that we talked about a good bit is the bridge on Red Bay Road. We had a scheduled opening for the beginning of July, and then it was moved to the beginning of August. Weather constraints have, uh, limited the contractor's ability to complete paving, but our projected, uh, completion date is August thirty-first, provided we don't get another ten inches of rain, uh, between now and the end of the month, like we did at the beginning of the month. Uh, an update on the Manning Avenue Bridge, the project has begun there, so brush is being cleared, rubbing is the term for it, that work is going on. Uh, that must be done in order to move to the next phase of construction, which will be some relo, some utility relocations, and, uh, that will allow time for the contractors to move forward with permitting. So while this project will take some time, it is moving forward. And, um, the next phase that I think that we will see, that we will recognize, will be demolition. But again, that's sometime off in the future. Um, another, another city proj, another project that will impact city residents will be the intersection improvement at, um, Broad Street and St. Paul Church Road. It is scheduled to go out for bid in November of this year, November of twenty twenty-five. And that is to accommodate additional turn lane space into Charlotte Air Force Base, and to square that intersection some, so that when you make a right turn on Broad Street, it, you've got a little bit safer line of sight. Uh, Gin Yard and Boltman Drive, if you've moved around the city any recently, you'll notice as you come down from Westmark, uh, Gin Yard Extension down to Boltman Drive, there's been some paving going on there. The contractors on that job are currently working on the concrete portion, which will be the driveway repairs. And there had, most recently, been some sidewalk repair and replacement sections there in front of the cemetery. So the, um, estimated completion date for that project is fall of twenty twenty-six. And we will continue to see the, the different sections as they, as they progress along North Main and Manning Avenue Corridor Improvement Projects. We touched on those just a few minutes ago, as we talked about the project in front of Morris College, um. They are, and there were just a minute, because I left my, my reading glasses that really helped a lot in the last year, so. Thank you. But, um, so, um, those projects are, are moving along as scheduled. We should see in the near future, utility relocation begin on North Main to accommodate some of the construction that will take place. This too is another multi-year project, so what we will see is the beginning phase, uh, it will be painful for a little while, there'll be some construction, and we live around and we drive around for probably a period of two years. But just know that the end result will be well worth the wait. Uh, and then additionally, part of what SUEAS oversees is not just vehicle traffic, it's any mode of transportation. And we've received some outside funding for some sidewalk construction and improvement in the Holson Park neighborhood. Uh, we are awaiting the completion of some engineering, so that work can go out for bid. Uh, Lafayette Drive, which will connect, Crowswell, uh, Crowswell Drive from the park to roughly the police department. Uh, that is part of that project. The, uh, Turkey Creek Greenway, which will connect the Turkey Creek area back to about the same location, the police department, and then, uh, there's some other areas that are being studied for feasibility. But those projects, um, have been funded, and the planning stage sometimes is just as long as the building stage. So just, just know that change is coming, and be patient, and, uh, and we will all be able to enjoy that in the coming years. But that, that area of town is long overdue for some sidewalk improvement, and I can assure you that SUEAS would be certainly glad to see some activity, some, uh, some, some activity moving in that direction. And then, on a personal note, I'd like to add that this past weekend, with all the tennis going on, there was also swimming held at the Aquatic Center. And I was able to attend that for about two hours on Saturday morning. I wasn't quite as dedicated as those with the tailgate tents and coolers. But, um, several hundred people there, uh, in excess of one hundred swimmers. All, all young people, high school aged and younger, very well attended, great facility. Uh, it's the first time I've ever seen it utilized for anything like that. But I think that as, as, as for our community, we don't have a water feature to draw on, we don't have an ocean, we don't have a lake, we don't have rivers. So sports tourism, I think, is one thing that we are able to, uh, to cultivate and to promote. And in conjunction with the tennis, that was another great event to see, a lot of, a lot of visitors from out of town. I was reading the city names on the buses that were in the parking lot, and, uh, we sure are glad they were here spending money.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Here none. The city manager report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, just real quick, you have a demolition update showing, uh, demolition underway and, and a couple other additions there for you. And then also your financials with the new fiscal year, you've got July, and there's also a new, uh, a note on hospitality, if you look at the, the tennis tournament, some of the expenses are running through there, but we'll settle up. To that end, at the next meeting, we'll have a short update, and try to do an after-action report, and and a couple of real quick updates at your next meeting for you as well. We did have-
Sorry, Miss, can you get your hands on that, Mr. Owens, it's been on screen, or do you, do you have that? The demolition report? Sorry, I'm trying to, we should have caught you beforehand. It's just good for hope, see.
All these doing that, Mr. Mayor, we did have a chance to meet with officials subdued today, and they told us over the next six months, you will see crews working on North Main and Manning Avenue. You've probably seen them on Manning Avenue, just to touch faster than North Main, but there were two separate crews that will be moving the power poles back that'll make way for the water line on North Main and Manning Avenue, North Main. So it's just the next phase in the project, and that's part of the contract that's going. So if you see something happening there, it's definitely a part of the project. And acted like maybe on Manning Avenue we'd see within the next two weeks, but things like hurricanes and everything else could pull them off, so. He said full disclosure, it'll take a little time, but they'll, they'll be working on that real soon.
Sir, do you understand, do you know why the twenty-nine is highlighted on the aspect?
Our lab's reported twenty-eight.
I got you.
That's the change. Just highlighting the change in last-
So, uh, so it's not highlighted, but it's a strike through on the bottom, say next property, have they been, are they off the list, or they've been demolished on that strike through?
They have been demolished.
How about, what, what money is left there from the current grant?
We see-
Is that what the two-hundred-and-four thousand?
The, the funds spent, two, two-hundred-and-four thousand eight fifty has been spent of the city's portion.
Three-seventy-four?
Yes.
I mean, it's the current part, some of that county money is in the urbanized area of the city, right? Some of it is-
It, it definitely is. It almost two-part city. So, so our portion, the city portion is seven fifty altogether, two-hundred-and-four has been spent of our seven fifty. The county has additional. The three-seventy-four is just showing you, I think, the composite of what's been spent today, city and county. Yes, sir. Also, Cal Kelly gave us an update, and again, Council David did it very well, but last time we were asked for a day on Manning Avenue, North Main, and details, so all of that will be emailed directly to you for the attachment. If I forward it, it wouldn't attach, so we'll, we'll get it sent directly to you tomorrow. I hope not tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Crowe? Hearing none, thanks to our public comments portion of our meeting. We have guidelines for that as well. Public comments, we now reach the agenda for comments by our city citizens, consistent with our city codes, opportunity for citizens of the city who have signed up prior to the beginning of this meeting to address the council city matters, with the exception of personnel matters. In the interest of time, comments by any one speaker, limited no more than three minutes, avoid repetition and conserve time for those who group of citizens such as neighborhood committee or citizens group, which express the same view or advocate for the same position we ask for those that want to, like to speak on behalf of the entire group. In addition to this portion of the agenda, the citizens and those who are not citizens can express opinions to council using telephone, email, or other information, contact information related to the website. It's not intended as a question and answer with city council or the city manager, it's not a need for us to hear from our citizens of the city. We appreciate those that have signed up prior. We know somebody, but your name is called, come to the podium, we'll say your name and address directly, so. Ms. Crowe?
Good evening, everyone. And I thank you for my opportunity. First, let me just give my Lord, Savior, an almighty, Jesus Christ, who's in my life. And what I'm here for as a representative of South Sumter Advocates for Culture and Economic Development. And what we are concerned about now is, no, personally, the, the, I want to thank the board for the activities that have been shown to South Sumter. We have seen, we are seeing a lot of activities as far as cutting, cutting back on the old growth and, um, the payments, not payment, but the passion for the streets because we needed that because a lot of our vehicles being outlined because of those type of situations. We are also concerned about the lighting that's in there. We need more illumination in that area because with that darkened cloak, it creates some of the activities that, um, of criminal nature that could be involved through having our means of additional lighting and other deterrents. The deterrents that we're using now are the cameras. Those cameras are very effective because of the fact that they, it helps to dominate the trap, slow down the traffic area. We're slowing down the traffic area as well as creating a means of, of less means of gunfire in the air. We know that this, that South Sumter is a project that has to be addressed fully always. Everybody has to put their parts in, we have to be able to go out and making sure that our own properties are up to date. And for those that need some means of assistance, we're trying to provide those means as well. It's, it's, but I, I, again, I'm also involved in COGS and, and having them to address certain issues. We have a de-hack now because of the infrastructures of the steel that have occurred in that area. And then, um, there are other projects that has to be addressed with the old growth and wooden areas, that are housing, um, animals, citizens of our dogs, and then other, other types of, uh, creatures. So if, um, we can address these issues, especially with the park as well, the park itself, the art park, it's a beautiful park, and, um, we want to keep it just that way. We have a problem with the, with the wall now that having, um, the, the pigment of the paint because it wasn't coated, uh, over after the objects that finished, um, with their details. But that hasn't emerged and is supposed to be happening. With that being said, and I'm sorry for going over, but I'll just say this right here in conclusion. I'm praying that we create, create an alliance through our mission, that we can all come together and as we all grow and, and, and tackle some productive areas, it'll make our city more safer, sound, we can make each other better.
Thank you, sir.
What's your name, what's your name, your group called?
It's, oh.
South Sumter?
Our group is called South Sumter Advocates for Culture and Economic Development.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Lees Smith, Congress.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to speak on behalf of three forty-five Ben Street, Queen Street, South Street, and Cook Street. We have a very-
Ms. Crowe, state your name for us, please, ma'am.
Gloria Lees Smith, Gloria.
Thank you.
We have an issue on Cook Street where we are continuously having people to dump their old furniture on the street. Every time they come and pick it up, I think they did put a camera down there by the city dump. So now they have moved further down the street, and they are dumping old furniture further down the street. There is a boarding house on South Street. I'm not trying to put anybody out of their house, but I think the owner of that boarding house needs to be contacted. It's horrible. Cats everywhere. My son just found two new baby cats behind my barn today. I am a want all those cats. There are neighbors in the area don't ever cut their grass. And when I lived on Huck Street, if we're in the city, the city shouldn't look like that. When I lived on Huck Street and our house burned and we weren't keeping our grass cut, City Code came through and told us if we didn't cut the grass, we were going to get a fine. Before we got out there to cut the grass, we had to be fined. The neighbor on Queen Street has not cut the grass all summer. Now we are having an issue of the big rats because they think it's the view. They think that's where they are supposed to live. Trash, paper, um, it, it, it's, it's, it's not where I feel like you would want to live in that neighborhood because the neighborhood should be kept better. There, there's several houses that don't cut their grass. And I feel like the city or City Code or whoever's in charge should send some kind of notice to let people know that they are responsible for keeping their yard better, grooming their yard better, and most importantly, the dumping of the furniture on the side of the street is, is, is not a good look. I wouldn't want anybody to come visit me and come on my street at this moment in time because it's horrible. It's horrible. And I think that if the city get more involved, I don't know if it's because where we live, but I think all of us should be able to live comfortably. If we pay our bills and everything, we're able to put our feet on the ground, then we should be able to live in a comfortable neighborhood where we feel comfortable, that if you have family members coming out of town, that they don't feel like they're coming into a trashy area that I don't feel safe to be in. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you for bringing our attention. Ms. Lyle Spencer?
Good evening, everyone. I'm down here today, but I'm not down here for the hospital. Y'all had did that for me, and I want to say thank y'all, and thank y'all for coming out and put that sign out there. I feel good, everybody telling me how good it looked there now, and I know it looked good, and, 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 and just you all working with me with that hospital, I feel good. I'm not going down here for hospital today, I'm down here for water. My, I was just checking on the two years, I was coming down here from planning about my water, my water got sandy. I English called hill plumbing, and they tell me what is need and what's going on, but I don't have the money to do it. But I pay these three bills a month. That's the water bill, that's I have to buy water for the house, and then I have to go into laundry and wash my clothes. So I hope that you all can do something for me with that, that water because, um, and then I have water comes in the house. I can't do how to do a cooking or anything because of water, and it's because that's sand and that, that comes in, in, in my kitchen. So y'all, if y'all can see what y'all can do for me with that water, I sure appreciate it, and then behind the river water, that's, that, that land is sinking, a hole is, see like a hole is about to come there. I don't need that to fall in, I need that for y'all to come and check and see what y'all can do for that. And I appreciate y'all with the hospital, and I appreciate y'all for coming out, um, that doing, taking care of the water. Then I got a house that on that street that need to be taken care of. When I hear about these two men's and stuff was, was, was losing something here and, and the police was looking for, you know they be looking for these houses where in, in nobody had a whatever? And, 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 and that house on my street, someone always be going there. So we all are looking at those things for me, and I appreciate it very much. Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for the encouragement on the hospital, on the hospital, because that was a long time, we have a lot of folks involved, so we're glad that, that it's, got that done. Ms. Linda Hasty? Ms. Hasty?
Good evening, Linda Hasty, one of the Marvin Avenue. I thought I was last, but I gave y'all some break for my complaints, but, um, I, I want to talk about bus transportation again. I wrote it out, but I can't read it, so. My issue is all of these improvements that we're doing around something, they're making something look lovely. My children in Washington and Alaska can see something, they're proud to show off something now where they are. And so we need that bus transportation. I know that some of y'all are all on the transportation board, um, and I see the signs going up, but what they're, doesn't read signs going up, don't know what bus is running there, what time the bus is running, where the bus is going. Also, um, there's no shelter, no bench. I like riding the city bus when I leave something because it helps me learn to sit. But here, I can't do it because there's no place for me to sit. If I got to the bus stop, there's no place for me to sit while I wait on the bus, so I'm not going to ride the bus. I'm not going to grocery shop because there's no place for me to come back and sit and wait on the bus. So those are the things that we need to do to improve our bus transportation, and it will improve our economics also because you have children who are on the edge of some of the city limits. They need to be able to get USC or get the tech or over here to the adult program without having to inconvenience their parents and other folks. They need these opportunities, but these grants, these funds are out there for them, and they just can't reach them. But if we had better trans, bus, public bus transportation, and the high schools, let me not forget those, since children are late for school, and I, I don't even have any children in school anymore, but I have made it my job, if there are children on my street that are going to school and I'm up, I would just let their parents down, go ahead and take them, because missing instruction is important. You don't know what's going on in the school day when you're not in class. So high schools, the public bus service would suit them because they could, would have no excuse for not being in class, not knowing what's going on. So that way we would alleviate the, the school system, the elementary and middle school kids would be on those buses, and high school kids would be able to do other things also.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Michelle Ross? We appreciate that summer break, Ms. Hasty. I used to see it, but that is present.
Um, my name's Michelle Ross, and I live on Evans Terrace. First, I'd like to echo the compliments that you've received, you've all received already tonight, because I just love hearing, um, the good that's happening in different parts of, of Sumter. And want to thank you for being at the unveiling of the historic commission, of the historic marker, and councilmen blasting, getting your, your prayer was anointed. And also the, the documentation that's taking place in West End Neighborhood Association, I love that project that's going on. So now I will move on to myself. I raised five children. One day, as I cradled my firstborn, I had a light bulb moment. The quality of my child's life and that of every child who followed depended solely on my actions, the level of my humanity and the availability of resources. I'm also a teacher, and either scenario, is any one child or student more important than another? Is any duty of parenting or teaching more important than another? I think we would all agree, no. Still, how does one begin to manage or prioritize? All that to say that I cannot imagine the daily challenges you face as governing leaders. All that to say that I cannot imagine the daily challenges you face as governing leaders. Uh development structures always begin with a solid foundation and this applies to building and maintaining a community. We all require food and shelter and in this modern era, education is essential. Traditional knowledge is no longer the cornerstone for a functioning community. Industrialization has forced formal education to the forefront forefront. Every member of society must now be equipped to the best of his ability for full participation. And that depends on the distribution of resources and one's quality of life. However, we are all witness at times to an unequal distribution of resources. This should be unacceptable, but it's not because we have embraced it. It but it's because we have embraced it as as normality. Trickle-down economics dominates and has only magnified inequality. I get it. Nevertheless, it takes observation, awareness, and deep conviction to change this demographic design. And I believe it can be done. Included in the city's budget are taxes, grants, and investments. Taxpayer funds have recently built two, I'm done. I'm just, there is one, there's like two more sentences.
Sure.
All right. Um taxpayer funds have recently built two million, multimillion-dollar complexes. And instead of a top-down economic approach, can you imagine the transformation of Sum- Sumter if we would have reversed that with funds allocated and committed to in education, infrastructure, and safety? With such a commitment, can you further imagine how much more hopeful and empowered the present and future generations can be? Thank you for allowing me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We appreciate all those signed up. We do have three folks that signed up. Just wanted to address them, Ms. Watts, uh Ms. is it Hankins or Hawkins?
Hawkins.
Hawkins and uh Ms. Williams. Um that particular form, this particular form is for city residents only and addresses given on the this show that you guys are counting residents. So unfortunately, it's a city resident-only public comment section. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. I think we need a brief executive session.
Do you think uh you talk about contractual matter related to the city?
Motion going to the executive session? Motion in second, all the papers are. Be opposed. Executive session will settle.